September 19th, regular work session of the Frankford City Board of Commissioners. The order, clerk, please call both.
Mr. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Thank you, Ramon. As you can see, we've moved this work session down onto the ground today. Going to try and be a little more informal. Set up a podium with a microphone. We have a microphone here at the table that can be moved to the podium for folks to feel the need to stand and talk to it. If anybody wants to sit and chat with us, is welcome to do that as well. Well, your citizen comments first, as we have some guests today.
Stand up, do it.
Please. Well, actually, could you go a little closer to the mic?
I think you'll be able to hear me. My voice has always been pretty booming. I'm Kelly Everman with Downtown Frankford. I just wanted to, first off, say thank you to the city, city commission, and I also see that the county judge executive is here too. So I'll pass it on to Ted Collins and his staff as well, that I am eternally grateful for all the support that you've given me as the executive director of Downtown Frankford over the last three and a half years. I'm thrilled with what we've all been able to accomplish together, and I appreciate your support, and I am thrilled to introduce you to the new DFI director, Britten Skinner. I wanted you to, you might have read a little bit about her in the paper, I wanted you to have a face to put with the name. There'll be probably another article tomorrow in the paper that'll give you some more information, but I'm very proud to introduce Britten to you. There is no doubt in my mind that she is going to partner with all of you all beautifully, and we'll be moving Frankford into the next chapter of our lives. And I'm glad to have been a part of it up till now. I'm tickled that I'm going to get to jump ship and go do some different things, but I am one phone call away, I've assured Britten, and the fact that we're getting a couple of weeks of training together ensures your investment in us and your investment in Downtown Frankford, that she'll be up to speed and running in no time. So I just wanted to make the introduction, and again, thank you. And I'll be around for two more weeks, so, thanks.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yep. Welcome, Britten.
You know, between the recession and the temporary relocation of the courthouse and the fire on St. Clair, it's a wonder that downtown has moved forward at all, but it's really been a flurry, you know, the last few years, and that's a testament to your leadership. You brought a lot to our community, and it was a pleasure to work with you. And I think, I can speak for all of us, I said to all the others who were working with you, well, Britten, along with the party. Any other citizen comments? Or anybody else? Okay. Well, the next order of business is to go into closed session. We have some more distinguished guests here discussing business with, so we would normally go into closed session at the end of a meeting, but since we have some folks here specifically for this, I'll go ahead and enter an motion to go into closed session adjacent to P R sixty-one point eight one oh, Subsection one B, discuss property. So, second. Clerk, please call both.
Commissioner Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Protimon.
Yes. I was going to skip to one piece of new business before she left, the appearance of staff reports. Is there anything particularly urgent that the folks want to get out before Katie has to move on?
Just, I'd like permission to add to the agenda, the purpose of the tax vehicles, but we just got the state contract pricing release earlier Friday, so that's why I didn't have it. I can add to that.
Does it have a flex capacity?
A what?
Just kidding.
Jackson.
Yes.
We'd like to add a condemnation to the agenda. There's a partnership called Ridgeview Lended, where Mr. Scalp needs a pump station. We've been discussing with the owner attempting to purchase that, but due to the fact that we discovered there are substantial federal tax means on the property, we really had to condemn it in order to be able to locate the pump station upon the property without substantial federal tax means issues. So we'd like for authority to go ahead and find a condemnation action, as we've done in other cases.
Okay.
Please.
Can we have people speak in the microphone so that we can see?
Sure. We'll ask folks to actually come up here and speak into the microphone so we can capture it all in terms of the recording. Did you have something, Jeff, that was there?
I just got this back today. The roof, we talked at the roof last Monday, just an estimate of forty dollars a square foot vegetative roof. And so, two options for the traditional roof is a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but a vegetative roof would be three hundred thousand plus the shoring required at forty thousand, so around three hundred to three fifty range for that option, so.
Will's want to report back on that. Thanks, Jeff. My take is that those numbers are not positive. I mean, I'd really like to see us do a green grid, but I think we might have to look for a more positive opportunity. I mean, they're almost there because of green grid, because we expect the last price is a long, conventional roof, but isn't one of the prices high? I guess, is there still any, is there a possibility to just define a little four hundred square foot? Is that reasonable?
We met with the Division of Energy representative last week, and she just came into town to see how we're progressing with spending down the grant, and she would like us to identify how we were going to spend the seventy thousand dollars we had left for October first. In that way, she's seen some communities not spending the money, and she's out visiting to make sure that they don't miss this opportunity. So, we were going to recommend, you know, still the roof, because the roof needs to be replaced.
Oh, I see.
Is one option. But it's...
Close to it with energy efficient materials that meet?
Meet the grant requirements. Because there's really not a lot of time to apply to do a certain roof. We can pretty much put out a bid package and award it at the end. I don't know if we can get it on October, because we haven't prepared the bid package yet. We were waiting to kind of, we were inspect as far as the roof goes. So unless we did a special meeting in November, the first opportunity to award a roof bid would be the end of November. So that's some of the discussions we'll need to figure out in terms of the timing, because we're starting to lose our window to put on them.
Sure. Well, I'm open to calling a special meeting in November, you know, just to give them the green light they need. Just let us, let us know what you need, when you need it. Is that, what's on the green? Okay. And before, before you give it out, you could just, I'll take it real quick on the garbage piece survey, and how long for that, if there's anything we need to discuss.
Last Friday, we put in your all's boxes just a survey, along with a frequently asked questions sheet, and why we wanted to get it in there before the weekend, so you all could have a chance to look over some of the issues that we've kind of just, as staff, recommended, maybe some policies to do in-house of how, you know, free weeks, I think we suggested four or three weeks at Christmas, and maybe one in the fall, one in the spring, and, you know, just kind of throw some information out there to get some feedback of how many times that will be offered, how many bags that residents might receive for free on the front end of the program, bulky items, just to, you know, we are going to continue picking up bulky items and yard waste, so that will never not be a change from today. The fact that we'll pick up red bins that people are currently using to recycle, and their trash cans, we'll pick those up and recycle those when we change out their carts. And just try to get some, you know, the fine of twenty-five dollars, if you're not in compliance, to give you five days, for example, is one of the suggestions, to get your feedback on, is that an appropriate dollar amount? Is five days, is it like too long, too short? Just to kind of get some feedback from you all.
I assume that five days is appropriate. That's our working day, so it should be until the next, I guess, until the next track day, but if that's the case. Is that, does that some any feedback on, in terms of getting the questionnaire out, or is that just?
Well, we have an ordinance that, I've been working with the city solicitor on preparing the ordinance, and I guess some of these issues either need to be addressed in an ordinance or in a city policy.
Sure.
And so we just want to make sure what we're proposing you all are comfortable with before we put it in the form of ordinance or a standard operating policy. As far as the questionnaire, we have received one process to do it, mail it out, we're waiting on a second one, and we're also waiting on the second reading to have the number appropriated. What can I pay for that?
The, the goal was to get folks, you know, to get it out there for three weeks, you folks three weeks?
Right.
Are we falling behind on that schedule? Do we need to do a lot more time?
We can still give it to them for three weeks, but it's going to put us a little bit further behind. It's a longer process.
Do you expect that three weeks to start, not a week ago, but I guess a week from today?
At least a week from today.
Okay. In terms of public education and outreach, Katie suggested that we make the three size cans actually available in the public, in places like Kroger and at public events, so the folks can actually see the cans and actually get it, you know, during this outreach period, can actually get a physical sense of how large the cans are and what these sizes actually mean. I assume we already have cans?
Yes.
Available for demonstration here?
We have, we have one of each size.
Great. Is there, I think this is a question for the commission. There's a, a community garden harvest festival coming up this weekend, Saturday, and there's an opportunity there to discuss composting as a waste alternative option, but that's, you know, that's a public festival with lots of nonprofits and folks having information booths. Any objections to having three cans available at the festival so the folks can see, see what those options are? Or do we want to actually have the questionnaire sent out on the street when they start making the changes?
I think the more we, those cans are visible, the better, because people can see them and are comfortable with them as they come out. Any festival that we have, you know, we need to try to do our best to make sure that those examples are there so people can add while the survey's out.
How do you want staff for that?
Huh?
Staffing for that, do it. I mean, I'm more than happy to help, but I don't know how political that may look. Which I don't want it to look political, I just want it to be informative.
Sure. I mean, that's a good question, if expenses need to be... I'm just trying to take opportunities to get, you know, to make, make those information cans available to the public.
Or we just like make it bill more within the air?
I think if we could just set them out and put a sign on, this is the ninety-seven gallon can, or gallon cans, this is the sixty-seven gallon, on down the line, and I don't really feel like you would need somebody to staff it. I mean, what we're really trying to accomplish is so that people can see a can, a trash can, they can feel it, and see how big it is in person. With the, with the letters that we're sending out, it's going to have a frequently asked questions with it and a number to call, correct, if they have any other further questions before they, people can call us as commissioners and ask questions. So I don't know that we necessarily would need to staff someone at like a festival or a Kroger. What we could do, like on some of these events, we could drop it off on a Friday afternoon, wherever the festivals may be that weekend, and then pick them back up on Monday morning, so there's not any staff time. That's kind of maybe a way to get the cans physically to that location without having to pay anybody, they just set them.
And also, I guess I'd just like the commission's blessing. There's a, you know, the Rotary Club has a weekly program, a weekly talk every Wednesday at the Capital Plaza Hotel, that's seen by a lot of people, and it's also broadcast. I'm responsible for the programming on the twenty-eighth this month, which is the Wednesday after our voting meeting. And it seems that that's within the wind of a public education that we're shooting for, to be being an objection to, to me or someone else talking about the discussions we've had so far, and also displaying the cans in the questionnaire there. This is just a public information. Thanks, guys. If you have any more policy, you know, policy or ordinance questions, just let us know.
I guess the only really specific question we might have is, when people, when we have eleven thousand or so trash cans that we deliver, and there's a switch out if someone picked the wrong size initially, because they just didn't know, or they got the default can because they didn't respond to this everybody.
Sure.
They might call in and say, I need a larger or smaller can.
Sure.
And so, I guess one of the thoughts is to charge a twenty-dollar fee if you won't go up in size, or do it free one time if you go down in size, there's some options, because there's got to be a limit of how many, how much you can switch out, because otherwise it's going to be kind of chaotic to...
Right. It's going to be costly for us. Does everybody's had a chance to look at the materials that Jeff and I divided to, yes?
So if you got a smaller, say if you ordered a sixty-five gallon can, and said, well, I didn't want, no, that's too big, I don't really need that, I'm going to go to the thirty-two gallon size, which is smaller, the switch out would be, there would be no charge, plus it would adjust your rate, your monthly rate, but if you said that's too small, I want a larger can, then you'd be charged twenty dollars. Try to limit some of this.
I'm, I'm comfortable right now with the, with the frequently asked questions and responses that were sent out, and does anybody have anything else they want to discuss before we leave that, you know, staff's hand?
Excellent, very proactive, frequently asked questions, I'm very appreciative. None of the public issues, you guys, you know. Good thing it's on.
Okay. So you, we'll go ahead and get the surveys out, is that correct? Thanks, guys.
I'll try to do this real quick.
Thank you. You know, I'm sorry, I don't have a sitter. Can't show their hands this morning.
I think I mentioned this last week, Mr. Haddon, that question about pharmaceutical side of the health plan, what we're doing to control cost on that side, and one of the other things that we've been thinking about during, in fact, when we regrouped Chapter thirty-seven in 2010, the back page of the handout, so a section in there that we said, by written policy, the city manager would have the authority under the ordinance to set an incentive for employees that waive coverage on the plan. Other employers are doing it quite a lot. You see from, at the bottom of the front page, state government and board of education are giving their employees twenty-one hundred dollars a year to waive, county government is giving their employees twenty-eight hundred dollars per year to waive, and where we're at, just kind of summarize this, the chart on the front page, forty percent of our employees are carrying family plans, and when you contrast that to other employers, it's really high. It's not hard to explain, and you can't blame our employees for that. We've got one of the best plans in town, about the best price in town, and I think that just leads to high level of choice. So, the one thing, you know, Fred and I have talked about it, and there's rarely only a few ways to try to control cost, and one of them is to try to control your risk and the number of people that are on the plan. And so, we'd like to go forward with the ordinance and start offering an incentive to employees that waive coverage, because it relieves us of some risk. The state's plan just became available on the website late Friday afternoon. I'm still studying it, and I don't really have a number. Right now, I've kind of got a range in my head. I think if we got in there at about where the county's at, or a little over, we'd probably be able to get some movement and accomplish something. So I guess I was just kind of wanting the commission's blessing to go forward. If we're, if we get that blessing, one thing I would need to do is, the third page of this, when I wrote it in 2010, I wasn't aware of health reimbursement accounts, or HRAs, and I'd like to add that to the list of options that we could put the money into, that, an HRA account for those employees that waive.
I'm pretty comfortable with it. Definitely.
Thank you for your work.
Anything else you want to deal with, commission to report? Is that you, and I can see what you guys want to go on?
They're taking your pictures. No, thank you. Sorry for, if there's any inconvenience.
You got to do.
Michael got lost in pictures, so hang on, it's free.
I did.
Well, we can move back to the staff report, if anybody has anything else. Any old business? The manager?
The, the only thing that maybe we would ask the commission to think about, the, the staff gave us some feedback on the price of the small container, no, I'm sorry, the medium container. The general consensus, I think, is that the price would be four dollars. In actually thinking this through, and the steps that would be involved, the finance department realized that they would have to do a whole lot of paper, because of the difference between the five dollars. Mr. Dawson, do you want to speak to that? Do you, do you come up here, please?
Sure.
Just for short.
Thank you. Over the past several weeks, the finance department has been discussing the, you know, the administrative work required to make refunds back to those folks that would like either refund or haven't, haven't applied, they've applied their credit forward, and we've got about approximately thirty-five hundred folks that have applied their credit forward to the next, the next cycle of billings. But in the case where, you know, we had anticipated maybe a heavier load of folks going to the sixty-gallon can, you know, we're going to have a one-dollar, you know, credit, or, you know, we might have some writing checks for a dollar, and stuff like that, so we're trying to keep things clean in that case. That's my, that's my folks are concerned about.
May, how much is that going to work, Jim? I, that is a valid concern. I've got a couple of things. I think, however, I feel like we are a little too far into the public discussion of what the pricing is in order to go back and change that number. So I personally don't support you in that, but what I would support is finding some way to apply that to future costs. That way, we're not having to cut a dollar check to some people, or, you know, five-dollar check, whatever, even maybe they can apply that to future costs.
Right.
If possible.
I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Turner, if we refund folks five dollars a month, well, if we refund folks thirty dollars over, with a five-dollar fee structure, then it takes six months obviously to, for them to realize that refund. If it's a four-dollar structure, then it takes, if it just takes eight months instead of six, we can just continue to apply it outside the six-month period.
You know, we may have some billing adjustments going forward, that's, that's the only thing, trying to keep it clean and trying to keep it, where we don't make mistakes, or trying to, don't have to go into the systems much, so that was a concern, but...
But I, I mean, I agree with you, kind of, I think maybe a little more relevant for the thirty-five gallon can, essentially not targeting any of those.
Yeah, we just have, we just have to give them re... Yeah, right.
But that's, I think those trains are, those trains are already off the station.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other old business? So first, some real quick updates on stormwater utilities, green resiliency, sustainability for it. There's any, anything to report on the storm?
Yes, Mr. Scalp attended the Thursday afternoon meeting of the Franklin County Fiscal Court and discussed with them the hiring of a stormwater consultant, and you want to go very short before you come in, Mr. Scalp?
I made a presentation to fiscal court. They are in agreement. In fact, probably here in the next day or two, the city will get a resolution from fiscal court agreeing to do that. I've sent a abstract to be put on the, for new business for next week to authorize us to go ahead and advertise for the selection of a stormwater consultant. So that was given to Ramon, I think, Friday afternoon.
Great, nice work. Thank you. Are we going to, so are we going to be able to pass a green resiliency this month?
The Franklin County Fiscal Court, as I understand, passed a resolution in that same meeting on Thursday, and Mr. Moore has been working on that. Do you have a report on that?
Yes. The resolution that was passed by the county had a typographical error, and so that typographical error will be corrected, and it's my understanding that their resolution is substantially similar to the one that you all saw and the one that's being considered by the plant board, so it would appear that all the three parties are in accord, and so you all can move forward on that.
We get a copy of that this week?
Yes.
Thanks, Rob. Any, any update on the sustainability coordinator, or is that?
For the, for the public, we have met the executive manager of the plant board, Jim Smith and I met, and the last time, the judge was not available on that particular day because he had another meeting with AOC about the judicial center on that particular day. But we're at a point of trying to decide where the person would be located, and I think that we could locate that, that person physically in the city facilities, and I think very soon we'll have an office available, and so it should solve that part of the question, and we should be able to move forward if we can go ahead and decide specifically on what the job description would say and how we go about recruiting the person.
Thanks, Fred. Just keep us posted, let us know if you need anything.
Sure.
Anything from us.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any more old business? Any, any new business? Any business manager? I've got one piece of new business, and this is just a suggestion for the commission. I personally have a, could put together pretty easily a wish list of ordinances, either, either new ordinances or revisions, that if I could wave a magic wand, I would be interested in considering. I suspect that each of us have, have some thoughts on this sort of subject. So I'd like to suggest that at our next work session, which is, I believe, the tenth, I think it's October tenth, let me double check on that real quick. Yeah, it's October tenth, that maybe we each come to the table with a list of things we'd be interested in talking about, and maybe figure out real quick what, I think some of you might not have any support at all. A few things might have a majority of support, and might be worth further discussion, but that's the kind of thing. We spent the first half of the year working so hard on some of the fiscal impact, with the budgetary impact, and maybe now, now we're in period, we can think a little bit more about policy and ordinances that are... that aren't necessarily fiscal discussions. And maybe we can see where, where a majority of the commission and the mayor have some common ground and can maybe move forward on some things. And I'll, and I'll, I'll communicate that with the, with the mayor and with the commission as well. Does that sound reasonable? You're talking about just going through the whole quote of ordinances? Oh, no, I, I mean, I can, I can toss out some, some off the top of my head. For example, I would be happy to see a ban on glass pack mufflers in the city. Now, some people might want to discuss that, folks might, might not. We can maybe toss that idea out real quick. But if a majority of folks are interested in it, then, then we can do it. You know, I, there, some other cities have ordinances related to community gardens that I'd be interested in seeing. I mean, folks have feelings about everything from the curfews and zoning laws, et cetera. But, you know, if you, if you've got anything you'd like to, you'd like to do or see changed, just bring it to the table and we'll see if. Yeah, bring it to the table, October 10th and we'll see what. What can lie and what doesn't. We might, I assume that we'll be able to knock most of these ideas off the table real fast. I mean, it's hard to find majority of support for, for stuff like this sometimes. We might have majority of support for some stuff, we might be able to sort of, some stuff we can sort of, we're discussing. That's all I've got.
I, I do have one other report. On the subject of having employee meetings with the commission, that is scheduled for the third, third meeting, or the third Monday next month. Logistically, we haven't decided the specifics on it, but it is in the works.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Well, we're at the point we're ready to move on to discussion items. Thank you everyone for being so patient with us. I would go ahead and dismiss any, any department heads of personnel due to the need to sit through these discussion items. Feel free to say, or feel free to. And of course, we've got, well, I guess we already heard Randy's. Do you have anything else to add to this discussion item, Randy, or is that? Oh, you did, yeah, I'm sorry, you were gradually right.
Grant will call in here to do the property casualty presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Am I supposed to come up there?
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir. I like the idea of a chair. A chair, that works out a lot better.
I checked, there's no wires running in there.
Yeah, I don't need a electrical prod. First thing I'll do is tell you, I'm Grant Cobble, Schenault and Hope. This is my daughter Susan. And she kind of, and she works at Schenault and Hope. I've been, we've been kind of asked by Randy and Steve and, and your city manager, Fred, to come in and kind of tell you what we do and what we've done to this point towards the renewal of the, the renewal process of the city's insurance. Schenault and Hope has represented the city for more than 40 years. I've been part of it for 35 years. We bid the insurance, the property casualty liability, R O, public officials, law enforcement. We select companies, they're all, we require that they're all be A rated. In this term, we've selected Kentucky League of Cities, Travelers, and One Beacon. They all have specialty things and they all are very competitive carriers and they are, and they can also provide the service we're looking for. There are a lot of other companies that try to get in, they try to do different things. They, companies tend to have different coverages. So, we have to be careful on what we select and how we go about. We start in early July, collecting the information, viewing all the properties, finding all the properties, reviewing the property coverages, the inland marine and the equipment with the department heads. So, we'll spend time with each of those. Each year, they get used to seeing me. And in early August, the companies send their, their underwriters and their, what we call company engineers in to decide what the risk is and how comfortable they are with the city and our risk that we, that we have. For instance, the parks and the flood control ladies and the police department and so forth. In late August and early September, we complete the, all the additional questions that they have. And they have books of questions that we answer and spend time with section chiefs trying to figure out how many miles of sewers and how many claims we've had. And there's just untold questions. Human resources, Randy's is pretty heavy. In late, in late September, we receive the bids. We update the bids because the bids don't always come in similar enough to where they're, where you can even compare them. So, you have to get them updated, you have to get the, the mistakes corrected, you have to verify coverages. Sometimes they leave coverages out. You have to find and locate your mistakes and in a few cases, our mistakes. Then we go, we present the, we take the quotes, we evaluate them with the city manager, Rondi, Randy, Donahue, Steve Dawson, my office manager, Barbara Lush, who's been doing this for about five years longer than I have. And she also acts as the customer service representative for the city and myself. And then, we finally come to a decision and the city manager makes the final decision. It's actually his responsibility and it has been his responsibility to make decisions. The process has evolved over many years. There've been a lot of different ways it's been done. It was split among agencies one time and Schenault and Hope managed it. We've done it as an individual. We've, companies have, all companies, a bunch of companies have come in and all bid it with all different coverages and all different terms, which was a tremendous headache. And then, we had to help solve all those problems. So, we've had a million different ways it's been done, but we found that if by doing this, one, it takes a lot of politics out, it keeps, obviously, it's good for Schenault and Hope. I don't want to say anything that it's not. But we evaluate the quotes, we, and the forms of coverage, the liability coverages, the deductibles, the changes in coverages from one company to the other. And from all the information, a selection is made by Fred. And we request that the policies be written for a period and to guarantee the rates. We don't write the policies for three years, but we ask for a guaranteed base rate for three years so that in Steve's case, the budget doesn't rise and fall as insurance company rates rises, they rise and fall, sometimes due to losses, sometimes due to market conditions. Right now, market conditions would look to be that the rates are going to be going up across all boards, but with an account this size, if you press this in the beginning, then many times we win it. And we've been real lucky keeping our rate fairly stable over a long period of time. The city manager then presents this choice to the city commission at the last meeting in October. We were, right now, we're well into the process. And in all indications, it looks like it's going to be very favorable to the city. We don't have any idea at this moment who the final carrier would be. Right now, we're with the Kentucky League of Cities. We've been fairly happy with them. They've been fairly stable, they've been a stable market. And they provided the forms of liability and property coverage that some others haven't. And they've, they've weighed our liability deductibles and, and many things that, that end up saving money for the city of Frankfurt. And you have, it's a, it's a, it's a real process of comparing what you have at hand. And we'll see how that goes. But in these carriers, they will all provide numerous forms of coverages and options. And then, you just have to slim, get it down to where it's, where we can explain it. And Randy and Fred and Steve can come to terms and understand what they're purchasing. And it's, it's a system that's worked real well over the past many, many years. So, that's what we're doing. And they ask us to come and tell you where we are and what we do because it's, it's all different as, as one of you would know. But it's, every, every city does things differently. They, they don't all do it this way. Some of them would never move, some of them never consider changes or alterations. But the only way to do that is to sit down and go through this process, which we try to do about every three years. And there have been occasions where it's been four years between them, but it's, we try to keep it. And the competition is good because it keeps the playing field even and it keeps our rates at a reasonably good level. And I, and we've been a very profitable account to the, to the Kentucky League of Cities. And that's obvious from our losses and, I mean, there, we have losses, we have many losses. But we're able to hold most of them in check and we, we've been pretty lucky over the past years. Do you have any questions?
Question. Well, first question, Grant, would you guys consider at all sending it off to Scottsdale for a quote?
I didn't. They, they didn't really present an interest in, in doing it. I mean, city right now is in an occurrence form, all occurrence form. And we've got Travelers who's going to be willing to bid it. And they're, they're on a claims made form. And so, Scottsdale didn't, didn't choose, you know, they, we kind of looked around and tried to find markets that there, that are there. There are many, many markets and many representatives. I mean, I've been through times where there's only been one market. So, that's not any fun. That was an Italian company that wasn't really not very much fun.
And one of the, I think KLC provides a good service in terms of its insurance product to the cities across the Commonwealth. One of the areas of concern with KLC that I do have is their claims handling of Collins Company. I have a secret claims as a commissioner. I'm claiming it's involved with Collins Company. In particular, with their abilities to just be nice on the phone. Generally, the claims adjusters are quite rude.
Sometimes, I mean, it can be. Sometimes they, they lose their patience with cus, with your, our customers or your customers, you're my customer, but your customers are constituents.
Sure.
And, and a lot of times I get involved with trying to explain to people what that adjuster is trying to present. And in a liability suits, usually, liability cases is where the biggest problem usually arises, backup of sewer drains and liability losses where people, property are damaged and so forth. And of course, under the liability laws in state Kentucky, as you're aware, it's a, it's an depreciated value that's going to be paid under a liability claim. And many people do not like depreciated values on what they, what they're receiving. And so, you have to, you have to tell them. You then, a lot of times, we'll help them through that. And if they don't believe necessarily the adjuster because they feel like he's, he's on their side, sometimes we have to explain to them. If they want to go further, then actually, we refer into the Department of Insurance and they help them through it. And if that doesn't work, then I, then there's always the legal possibility. But the court system is going to take the same stance because that's. But you, normally, we've worked our way through it. And a lot of times, there's sewer backups are a particular problem. And maybe we're, I don't know where your main problem's coming from, but, you know, a first occurrence without knowledge is not, we're not liable. Unless we intentionally block the drain or we're in a construction process or, or, you know. So, it's, it's, there are a lot of people who don't understand that that's the case. A lot of people don't understand that they can purchase a backup of sewer drains on their own homeholds. It's very expensive. But initial, the first occasion is when we get our most complaints. We try to work our way through that.
And I've found that generally this happens. I just, one of the things that I wanted to stress and been vibrating that up is that, and I think you mentioned that at the beginning of your comments and response was that, unlike general customers, we're not a for-profit company, we're a government and we have to answer the constituents.
Constitents.
And those are who their, those adjusters are interacting with. And so, it's a reflection upon the commission and the city if they have a bad experience with them. So, just to keep that in mind.
And we try to keep that in, we try to be involved. Like I said, my office manager's been doing this for 40 years. And I've been doing it 35. And it, it does, I mean, there's, there'll be probably 10 or 12 claims in a year's period of time that she will become involved in. There's probably five of those that then I've become involved with. And then, and then typically, I'll even help them, get them up to the right people and give them, give them to the Department of Insurance. There should be one or two that regardless of what you do are going to be unhappy. Who want to make a, who want to make, you know, a replacement value of something that's paid on a depreciated value. And state law is very specific on it. And, and so, I mean, I've even taken them up to the Department of Insurance. I've actually taken them and fought Collins Company and won many that, that they didn't think were covered and we did. So, I mean, we, it's kind of where we are. We, we do provide a lot of, there's a lot of time and service that the agency provides to the city of Frankfurt. It's not always seen on the surface, but it's, it goes on all the time.
Right. And, and just to clarify, if the issues that I have been, become aware of or not has nothing to do with Schenault and Hope or the KLC staff, it's specifically isolated to those of Collins.
Collins Company, yeah. And adjusters do have some days, they have bad days.
Yeah, no doubt, when you're dealing with claims like that.
Can I ask any, any other questions? I promise, the staff are to be out here for.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you all for your patience. All ready to talk sewers?
Ready?
All ready, all ready.
We, we promised we won't take more than four hours.
So, you're telling us we'll get out here earlier?
I, I'm here just to kill a few minutes until we get started. But we're going to start, Jesse's going to start with a little bit of background. I'll talk a little bit about the financial side. And then, we'll turn it over to Strand and we'll be talking about specific issues. Do you want to go ahead and pass those out so they've got the maps? Jesse?
This, this being a presentation, I sense an interest in making the presentation available to the viewing public.
It's a visible.
They're saying the same thing.
Same thing, it's, it's pretty clear.
Jesse, I'm going to turn it over to her to give you a little bit of background.
And I've got additional copies that he has to the public if anybody's interested.
And all of that. Can you see the maps from the? Well, we are back today. If you recall, we were here a couple of months ago to speak about our long-term control plan for the sewer department. This is a plan that addresses our combined sewer system, which is South Frankfurt, Bell Point, downtown and the whole sewer areas. The goal, if you remember, of the long-term control plan is not necessarily to eliminate our combined sewer overflows, but is to reduce those combined sewer overflows to an acceptable level for the state and the EPA. The deadline for submission of our long-term control plan is the end of November this year. So, if you recall, last time we were here, we were speaking about all of the different alternatives that we have developed for addressing our combined sewer overflow issues. This time, we are back with the final plan that we plan to submit to the state and the EPA for approval. We have gone through a multiple step public meetings. The last set of meetings we had were presenting all the alternatives and getting feedback to get us down to this single alternative. So, there was a decent amount of public input that we got for this. I'm going to turn it over to Brad Derrick with Strand Engineers who helped us develop this plan. And he's going to go over some specifics of how the plan is and what we will be presenting to the state and EPA.
Thank you. Again, I'm Brad Derrick with Strand Associates. And I've given each of you a handout. It's got kind of a fact sheet about the long-term control plan. It's got a fact sheet about the long-term control plan. It's got a map showing schematically the proposed projects and behind that is a proposed implementation schedule that shows when those projects are intended to be built. The fact sheet kind of summarizes what the long-term control plan is and it's something you can refer back to if somebody has questions or if you want to refresh yourself on it. And any information beyond that you can get easily from the Sewer Department. And I'm going to go through the plan and the implementation schedule and cover that in a few minutes and go through some of the highlights of it. But I've got a couple of other things I wanted to cover as well. First off, I wanted to make sure everybody's aware, we did do a lot of public outreach and get public involvement in this process. We've held six meetings with the public to date and we've been at the City Commission a couple of times before. The basic findings of our public involvement process supported the long-term control plan that we came up with. This first map shows identification of existing uses in the waterways around Frankfurt that might be affected by sewer overflows and the real take-home message that we got from the public when we discussed uses that we were aware of and that they might be aware of was that recreation on the Kentucky River is the local priority. People use the river for various kinds of recreation and we want to maintain and improve that. Specifically, if any area is given a higher priority based on local considerations, the public told us that they would like that to be the area from Riverview Park, back upriver to the Capitol Avenue Bridge where most of the recreation is known to occur. That's where people are generally out boating and playing on the water. Other key points from the public process were that public recreation downstream of the dam isn't really a large concern, that the construction of possible detention and storage facilities would be preferred at the treatment plant instead of in neighborhoods throughout the city with possible, that building control facilities on lands that might be developed for another purpose is not preferable. And overall, keeping the cost as low as possible while considering the other priorities that were given is another preference from the public and I expect the commission as well. So all those things fit into what we expect the long-term control plan to be. Next figure that I've got here is a larger scale of the recommended plan. These, this recommended plan was developed from about 70 projects that we identified that could be done at various points to provide the control of sewer overflows at various locations throughout the city. And we took the best, about 20 of them, ended up selecting those that provided us with the right, right goal. There's a $40 million capital cost associated with these projects and this isn't the least expensive series of projects that we could have selected, it's very close to that, but it also considers some of those other goals that were mentioned by the city, by the public. And overall, this will provide and cover about 95% capture of wet weather flows that are generated within the combined sewer system. Essentially, that means that instead of around 100 million gallons of overflows in a typical year, which is what's occurring today, we will be at less than 5 million gallons in a typical year. So we're going to see a big reduction in the amount of overflows, but again, not eliminating them. We can get into the specifics for each section of the city with the combined sewer system. At the wastewater treatment plant, which is in the north end of the combined system in downtown Old City, there's likely to be a storage basin next to the treatment plant that would hold wet weather flow for time until it could be treated at the plant. We're also going to be doing some minor projects in the Bell Point neighborhood, some new, a new sewer line in one location in separation of the area that's tributary to the Hudson Avenue Pump Station. Those are what are recommended for there. In the Miro Street area, there are several projects that take advantage of existing infrastructure. And then the major projects in that area would be replacement of the Miro Street Pump Station, which is between the bridges on 127th and Wilkinson Boulevard, and construction of a new interceptor around the bend in the river behind Wilkinson Avenue. Along the Willow Street or Home Street area, which is east of the Miro Street area we just talked about, we expect to have a storage basin at, near the Willow Street Pump Station. And we're also suggesting the Home Street separation projects be defeated. One important thing to note about the Home Street separation projects is that we're not committing to do those on the long-term control plan schedule. Because of the cost associated with those and some specifics of the project, we're not specifically recommending those projects on the long-term control plan timeline. The storage basin at the Willow Street Station will provide the level of control that's needed to afford the long-term control plan and to comply with consent judgment. And all of those projects have to be completed on a set timeline, but the Home Street project is not included in that particular timeline. In the Capitol area, South Frankfurt, the area wherein where City Hall is located, we're expecting to see a new interceptor sewer from Dolly Graham Park area towards the Capitol Avenue Pump Station, a separation project to remove stormwater from US 60 Little Hill that's entering Ewing Street Pump Station basin, replacement of the Ewing Street Pump Station, and a new force main to send wet weather flows from that area of town all the way to the wastewater plant. And again, all of those projects will, are projected to add up to about $40 million in capital costs, today's dollars. And we came to these projects as being more cost-effective and they're going to a specific level of control, which is projected to be approximately three or four times a year that an overflow would occur in a typical year. And that was decided upon based upon a knee in the curve concept that's called for in regulations that govern these types of endeavors. And essentially, the whole idea is that we have to look at how much the sewers are going to overflow, how much discharge we're going to have during wet weather, and we have to look at the cost that we're getting, or we have to look at the cost benefit. And we're looking for a knee in the curve. At some point, we get the most effective return, we spend a little bit more and we get a lot more return, and at some point, we start spending a lot more for a little bit of return. And this is a hypothetical one, but there is a knee in the curve for Frankfurt and in some places there's not, but for Frankfurt, it's very clear that there is a knee and there's a point that we need to approach according to regulatory guidance, that we have to go this far, but we're not going any further than beyond this. And that's also based on the recommendations we got from the public involvement process. So we're going to the most cost-effective point for control in Frankfurt and that's how we came up with this plan. Now, we've talked about the implementation schedule a little bit. There are a lot of details. This is a draft schedule that'll be submitted to regulators for approval, but it shows essentially that for all the various projects that are included on the map, there's a code and description that should match and we've got different phases of the project lined out. The phases that will probably be most important to most people are the construction phases, as shown in red, and that's when people are going to be digging up streets, causing inconveniences to local residents. And you'll notice that there's a series of construction that happens towards the beginning of the implementation schedule and then there's a lot more that happens at the end. So most of the disruption in the downtown area will be at the end of the implementation, about 10 years from now. There is, there are some projects that are currently in development that'll be implemented in the next couple of years that will cause some disruption and a few things ongoing, but the majority of disruption will be six or seven years out, maybe more. We're suggesting a 10-year implementation schedule from the time the plan is approved. The approval time is tentative based on how long it takes Division of Water and US EPA Bridge and Point Atlanta to go through and approve the document, but we think that our realistic timeline for that is the end of 2012, which will start the clock ticking on the 10-year implementation schedule.
Am I correct in understanding that some of the design permits are already?
Some of the projects, the design and permitting is already underway. And some of those projects are things that the Sewer Department has decided they either need to undertake for their own purposes. Those are the, that's the only reason those are going on already is that they're advantageous regardless of the long-term control plan. Other projects, waiting on until they can be confirmed that those projects are approved and that the long-term control plan is what we expect it will be. As far as the schedule, the long-term control plan is submitted, we're drafting documented right now. It'll be provided to the Sewer Department and city staff for their review in October. We will make any necessary revisions and the entire thing should be submitted to both Kentucky Division of Water and EPA by November 30th. So if you all have any questions or you want to get into any of the specifics about the projects in more detail, we can do that.
Yes.
One quick question. I'm looking at the construction veggies and I noticed that down in 2020 to about 20, end of 2022, particularly in the South Frankfurt areas, we're going to see a lot of construction going on, whether it be on Capitol or Ewing and that area.
Yes.
Was there any, I guess that's going to create a significant burden on the community when there's that much construction going on. Was there any thought put into play about maybe staggering that out so it's not overwhelming at one point, or is the goal to do it all at once so that it isn't staggering? How do we approach?
It would be nice to stagger it out to minimize the disruption, but if you can do it all at once, you can minimize the cost and reduce the time that the disruption is going on.
And plus, there's a second factor that we have to include is our consent judgment has two separate issues. One is the sanitary sewer overflows and the second is the combined sewer overflows. We have to make the SSO or the sanitary sewer overflows go away by, what is it, 2014, I think it is, 2015? So we have to focus the majority of our resources on elimination of the SSOs. Now, as Strand has pointed out, we've undertaken some projects in the CSO where it makes sense, it makes financial sense to get that stormwater out of our system so we're not paying to treat it on the front end, but those are, those are few and far between. But that's not to say we won't undertake some other projects in that six or seven year period when we're, when we're dealing with the SSOs. Obviously, we are, but we're doing those on a case-by-case basis as it seems to make sense. And again, as Brad pointed out, sometimes, sometimes you've got the option, if you can break a project into three or four parts and bid those out, you're going to pay probably a higher unit cost to get the work done, but then you are spreading that, the pain out. Sometimes it's better and cheaper to consolidate that pain into a shorter period of time.
And just rip off the band-aid.
Yeah, exactly. But those will be, and again, you know, we're seeing this, we saw this first time a couple weeks ago, so we're still evaluating this. The schedule as we see it is what we're committing to do, doesn't mean we can't take some of these projects and move them up should we want to. What we can't do is move them back. So we'll look at those on a case-by-case basis if we see an issue. I mean, face it, a lot of times, many of these projects may very be driven by problems we encounter in our system. You know, we find a problem in our system, we fix it, and while we fix it, we fix the other part too. And unfortunately, we're in an age in our system where we're finding more than we'd like to sometimes.
I'll give you an example of one location where we could stagger construction, but we're not proposing to. So we've talked about expanding the pump stations or replacing them in South Frankfurt and then putting a force main across the river around the bend here and then onto the treatment plant. There's also a project in the same corridor to replace an interceptor along those lines. There are reasons that it might be advantageous to go ahead and put this line, the interceptor in today, do it as soon as possible. However, if we wait and coordinate those two projects together, there'd be an expectation that there'd be substantial savings on the construction cost and there wouldn't be a need to go in and dig up all of this property twice. It is owned, it's already an easement that's owned by the Sewer Department, but it's in a residential area. A lot of people use those yards and wouldn't want the construction equipment in there more than once. Another option, another location is, we're talking about building two force mains to the treatment plant across the river, one from Miro Street and one from the south side of town. And if we can put both of those into, into the same construction contract and do them at the same time, it'd be a big savings expected from doing two things at once instead of doing it once, coming back to them again later. And another real important key is we're doing some of the separation projects and other things early on and we're going to evaluate those, and I think on the schedule, it's shown in blue, is flow monitoring. We're going to do an evaluation of the effectiveness of this project and we're really hopeful that that project will be more effective than what we're projecting and that'll allow for downsizing of these future projects and ultimately savings. So that's, those are a lot of the considerations that we put into developing the schedule.
Can I ask one more question? And this may be a dumb question, but can someone, what do you mean by float?
That's time that, in the construction industry, things happen that you may not be able to prepare for.
Somebody gives us a contingency.
It's a contingency, it's a timing. Yeah, you know.
I'm sitting here picturing this, I'm putting something on the bar.
Hopefully, we're not doing too much of that, but examples are things like if you dig up a property and you find a bunch of.
Store of graveyard.
Right, store of grades, arrowheads, that sort of thing, things that have delay projects. If you run into difficulty permitting a railroad or a corn corndoor, engineers, other permitting things, or if you have difficulty completing a construction project for other reasons, this allows, we've tried to put in reasonable buffers so that as soon as it rains one day, we're not running back to regulators asking them for an extra day.
That's great. Thank you, Bramble.
Sure.
Do we already have easements or are we getting easements for different phases as we go?
Easements will probably be obtained as we go on project-by-project basis. We've tried to consider locations where easements are already existing or where the properties are more available, either already city-owned or in the Sewer Department or other government hands, where they're easier to access.
And also those.
That doesn't eliminate private property acquisition and the purpose, I said earlier that this is a schematic type map, it's not implying that we're going to route everything exactly as it's shown or that any particular property where a pump station or a basin is shown is necessarily the location. There are flexibilities with those and yeah, nothing is to particular scale so that we don't have to discuss a particular property at this time.
And in regard to easements, in many cases, frankly, we don't necessarily know where we have easements and we don't. We're going to try to, as much as possible, do with an existing right-of-way where we have existing easements, but as we do each project, we'll have to determine what additional easements we need and that's obviously part of that, that float issue also. One thing I want to, want to stress, you'll notice we're crossing the river several times. Currently today, we have 11 places where we cross the river. That's how many times we cross the river.
Every time?
11. Every one of those crossings with the. Every one of those crossings, with the exception of one, is when it was constructed, I assume, was on the riverbed bottom. We had a, a break of a force main about seven or eight years ago where something came during a flood and broke our pipe. And we had, yeah, it was a flash flood, it was a one-up and ball knob. We had to go in and replace that, and we did directional drilling so that it's actually under the river in the rocks. All of these projects, we're trying to do that because frankly, every time we have a flood, we hold our breath, hoping that we don't have another break.
That's your liability exposure on us too, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It'd be huge.
The last, the last break we had, we discharged about 17 million gallons of raw sewage in the Dega River.
And by force drilling of the, you wouldn't have been-
We will go under the, under the river, through the, through the actual bedrock, under the river, and abandon that part that's in the river. So we don't have to worry. We're obviously not eliminating all 11 of them, but everywhere we can, we're trying to, to, to reduce that number, to reduce that potential liability.
It'd be possible that these projects, they don't necessarily allow for abandoning of any of those current crossings, but it'd be possible to construct them in a way that-
That's our goal, to try to get rid of as many as we can.
Three, four, maybe five of them could be.
Could be.
That's a major cost.
Could be taking off one?
Yes, get rid of that particular-
That'd be possible.
It'd be great if we could cut ours in half.
Have you quantified cost savings in terms of water treatment? Is there a 95% estimate?
Well, right now, capture is around 80% of wet weather flow. So dry weather days, capture is typically 100%. During wet weather, capture is typically, on a yearly average basis, about 80%. So there won't be a cost savings. We're actually raising the bar here, getting to above 95% capture. The operational costs of these facilities are going to be pretty minimal, not insignificant, but generally, the projects that have been selected are more capital-intensive and lower on operations. I think the projected additional operating cost is in the range of $1 million a year, but that's just from memory. So there will be some additional costs associated with the expanded pumping stations or replaced pumping stations. Operating the storage basins will probably be the biggest cost. But considering what the sewer department is already doing, those are really marginal costs. They're going to be a small part in addition to what they're already doing. I wouldn't think that there would be, there'd be a minimal, if any, rate impact from the operational costs.
Our parks director is here, so I'll ask this question for you. This particular part of it goes right down the riverbank, past our existing park and some new trails that we're just building, plus the amphitheater, which we just dedicated. What impact would there be on, on those operations that already exist?
Well, I'm not familiar with the specific layout of the amphitheater.
In the apartment?
No, I believe it. But typically, we're talking about pipelines in a range of two to three-foot diameter.
Then it goes.
Yeah.
The trail goes.
The disturbance could be kept to as little as 10 feet if necessary during construction. So as long as there is a place that we can find a 10-foot corridor to interrupt temporarily and then repair, that's not an issue. Again, I'm not real familiar with the layout of the park.
And you have to also remember, these are schematics. We haven't done detailed design, and that's things that we will look at. Jim's been, I think, one of our Republicans, I believe. Yeah. So he's well aware of what's going on. And obviously, as we undertake each project, we invite all the appropriate stakeholders in to make sure that we do stuff that, that fits the best. You know, I'll give you a perfect example. I was involved long before I came here. I was involved with a project that we constructed a sewer line right down the middle of golf course. You know, now you'd think constructing a sewer down the middle of golf course. Well, we worked with the golf course, and we constructed it during the period when it had the least impact on the golf course. And we will try, within reason, to do that with property owners, commercial properties, as well as governmental entities that have an investment in this area. You know, if, if we're going down Ridgeview Park, you know, we may choose to do that project over a winter as opposed to a summer because it would have least impact on parks and the people using those parks.
We also, there is some flexibility. Obviously, these are just schematic designs at this point in time. So there are some flexibilities in some of these on the exact location that we'll get into in design. And that's part of the process that we would obviously pull in input for, you know, what street we might end up going down or where we might be in relation to some of these properties. We would figure out when we were actually going forward with design. And there might be ways that we can partner with other organizations or if there's projects that are already planned in one area, hopefully, we would be able to coordinate that type of thing.
And in regards to the question about maintenance costs, you'll notice, we're not putting any new pump stations in. Actually, what we're doing is replacing the pump stations that are there, that are old. In some cases, like you and we, believe the Lowlable Hill project will reduce our operating cost because we think we can take that pump station to a smaller station. All of these stations, as we renew them, we're putting in VFDs and other, other stuff that hopefully will save us money long-term. It's not like we're adding five or six new pump stations that will cost a lot of time on our part. Frankly, putting in a new pump station really is cheaper for us because not only are they most more energy efficient, but we have less problems with them, especially on the front end. And some of these stations, frankly, are approaching their, their life's capacity. I mean, they're, they're on life support as it is, so.
And this is all intended for wet weather capture, not a typical dry weather day. The P, the, the wet weather flows are generated are in the range of five to 10 times what's seen in a typical dry weather day in the sewer system. And the new facilities will only be pumping on those wet weather days. So the operational costs, especially from an electricity standpoint, to run pumps and equipment, that sort of thing, that's only going to happen about 50 days a year. These, these expanded systems will only be running 50 days or so a year.
They're doing that now, usually, when the flows go on.
Right, and now they're going into, and everything's running at its peak capacity.
I would say the newer stations are probably a little more energy efficient.
To maybe just-
Would you be like you, that they reference the very frequency drive?
Way.
We've, we've been very, very pleased with the, what we've seen so far. We're in the early stages of transitioning to VFDs.
Well, thank you for all the, the public input you all have taken into account. This is, knowing that we're being required to do a lot of this work, it's still going to be a hard sell to an extent. But it needs to be done, we're being forced to do it, and I'm glad we're doing it. And as cost-effective, I mean, as possible, also being considered as the public's wishes.
Right.
Thank you for all the work you put into this.
Now, next thing, talk about finances.
I forgot that earlier. Just realized.
That's all right, because I was going to, I was going to say a couple of things in front of my tone at the beginning. As Brad mentioned, and many of you have heard me say this in the past, we've always estimated that this program was going to run us anywhere from $25 million to $50 million. We've narrowed that down. We've narrowed it down to essentially in the range of $40 million. Still, not cheap, without, without question, it's not cheap. That averages to about $13 per month, per customer additional on their sewer bill, just that $40 million. That doesn't include anything else we're doing. That's basically to pay for that in $2,011 over the, what would you, what was it, 15 or 20 years?
20 years.
20-year period. So how we don't pay for that? That's the bottom line. And in 2007, as, as we were narrowing in on the consent judgment, the city commission approved three rate increases that we felt could finance this program. When I say this program, I'm speaking both of the long-term control plan associated with CSOs as well as elimination of the SSOs, which is going to be by the end of the day in the $75, $80 million arena. And January of '08, an eight, or excuse me, a 12% increase was, was implemented. We also had in '07 approve a 15% in January of '10 and a 15% in January of '12. We did a, a bond in '07. We used Morgan Keegan to come in and do all of our financial analysis for us. And we went forward that bond right at $10 million, just under $10 million. And '09, Morgan Keegan came back. They, again, did a financial analysis. And basically, because we were a little slower ramping up on the projects than we thought we would be because some of the things just always take longer than you anticipate, we did do a $14 million in 2010, 13A, I think it was, bond to help finance part of these projects, which most of that money's already either obligated or spent, a lot of it spent. But the 2010 rate increase was rescinded by the city commission because at that point, we were financially solid enough that we did not need that rate increase. What we would propose, we have another rate increase coming up in January 2012. It's another 15%. Steve Dawson and I have, have discussed, we would like to bring in Morgan Keegan again. They've done the last two financial analysis for us. They also did the one for the Public Safety Building. They, they also prepare all of our IRS documents that have to go to the Fed. So they have a very good understanding of our financial backing. So we would like, over the course of the next month to eight weeks, have them come back in, update their financial information, take a hard look at where we are financially, see the, the need of this January 1 increase. Does it have to be now? Can it be less than 15? Can we defer it to a future date? Which, you know, I'm, I can spend it, I don't know how to calculate it. But, so Steve and I would like to bring them in and, I say, take a look at our new financials, talk about everything, and come back, I'm guessing in the, maybe late October or November timeframe, with whatever recommendations come out of their analysis, if there is no objections to that.
I think that sounds, I think that sounds great.
Yeah. And with that, that pretty much covers what we wanted to talk about. Like I said, we wanted to basically give you all this information, let you have a chance. Feel free, if you have questions, call down. We'll be glad to talk to you, meet with you one-on-one to talk more specifics. We'll answer any questions you have. If we don't know the answers, we'll make one up. If we don't know one, we'll, we'll research it out and we'll get the answers for you. But again, this has to go to the Division of Water, actually technically, Division of Enforcement and US EPA at the end of November. And right now, we're trying to get this, we're hoping to maybe even get it in a week early, maybe the third week of November. But, you know, we're, we're moving forward with it. As Brad said, this is not the cheapest alternative, but by far, it is not the most expensive either. It is one of the cheaper alternatives. So what we've tried to do, there, there are some cheaper ones that frankly have more of an impact on the public. I think, in my opinion, it's, it's more prudent to spend a little more money now and to have a more positive impact on the public. Because no matter what we do, we are going to upset people. I mean, I'm telling you that right now, we know that. And the, the least we can upset people, the easier it is for us to deal with, the easier it is for the public to deal with. We try to do project meetings at the front end of every project so that the neighborhoods where we're working know what we're doing. We make sure the contractor is aware of the issues of the particular neighborhood. Doesn't mean we haven't had a few setbacks. Doesn't mean that we haven't gotten, and I haven't gotten, some phone calls from very high-rate people. But so far, we've been able to get everybody calmed down, figure out what the root cause of the problem is, fix it and move on. And obviously, that's our goal is, it'd be great if we could do that without inconveniences to anybody, but it's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen, unfortunately. With that, if there's any general questions about projects, financing?
I'll just say, I really appreciate the, the approach you've taken to this. I think that, you know, obviously, the commission has discussed this repeatedly over the last few years, and I think we all recognize that the city has been and has been in compliance with the, with the law, with the Water Act. And that we, we are legally obligated to comply with the consent judgment.
Right.
The agreement we're under with the state for this work needs to be done in no uncertain terms. And it needs to be paid for.
It's, well, and, and, you know, we are looking at every alternative we can. You know, that's, and one of the things we'll be working with Morgan Keegan. Are we going to do another bond? There's state revolving fund, which is a fairly inexpensive process right now from an interest rate numbers. And I don't know how many times Jesse's heard me say this, but I'm, I'm a true believer when we do a project, when we're in people's yard, I think we have to look at is, if this were in my backyard, what would my expectations be? And frankly, that is the way I look at it, you know? Somebody digs across my yard, I'm not going to be happy. But if they satisfy my base concerns, I can, I can accept it and deal with it.
And I think that's all that we can ask for anybody, but in approaching something like this, it's just to keep the people's, the people in consideration as in before.
Right. And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Appreciate that.
Other questions? Comments, concerns?
And if you do make things easier in a January, it would be very appreciated.
Well, and again, you know, I seriously doubt that we can make Januaries go away, but hopefully, we can, we can make it less painful.
Anybody else have anything else on these, on these lines?
Thanks.
Thanks for, thanks for everything, guys. One, one last I would mention before we move on to your motion for adjournment. I mentioned this already, but after the entire commission, Dave Steele, the head of YHCA and also the chair of the Pioneering Healthy Communities Initiative, would like to be on the agenda next month if it presents a good for the city without objection. I am happy to entertain a motion for adjournment. I'm happy to sit. Please call.
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
May I approach and waddle?
Yes, thank you. You're adjourned.